I'd like to bring this meeting of the school committee to order and ask you to join with me in a pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have unfortunately lost two members of our educational community, Frank Marino and David Neary. And in a moment, we're going to take a second from our business meeting to remember them and to support their families. Frank was a moderate special needs teacher with us for 13 years. And David Neary was a vocational technical teacher also with us for 13 years.
He was a plumber.
A plumber at the Volk Program, that's correct. Okay. So, please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Is there anybody attending tonight's meeting who isn't already on the agenda who would like to speak to the school committee? We'll do our student representatives now, and we'll start with Ed from Plymouth North.
Thank you. Seventeen Plymouth North High School students attended the Harvard Model UN Conference held in Boston from January 25th to January 28th. The conference consisted of students from all over the nation and world. Plymouth North students were delegates of Denmark and debated real international issues working towards drafting a formal resolution. All students represented Plymouth North in an engaged and respectful manner. The experience is both fun and educational for all. The science fair will be held on Tuesday, February 13th at Plymouth North High School. Student registration will begin at 3:00 PM. The fair will be open to the public from 7:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Winners will continue to the South Shore Regional Science Fair being held at Bridgewater State University on March 11th. Good luck to all of our students that submitted projects. Winter recess begins on Monday, February 19th. Students will return to school on Monday, February 26th. Plymouth North Academic Program Orientation will be held on Tuesday, February 6th at 6:30 PM. During the event, parents and current eighth grade students that will attend north in the fall will be given a tour of the building, receive an academic overview from the department heads, be introduced to the freshman academy, and learn about clubs and sports offered. Report cards were distributed Monday, January 29th. All students arrived home from their report cards on that day. The sale of cap and gowns will begin on February 1st and will run through February 16th. Orders may be placed before or after school in Ms. Allen's room, Room 331. The cost is $25. Check your money. Order only made payable to PNHSSAF. Thursday, February 8th, the Plymouth North and South Guidance Departments will be hosting the Fourth Annual Advanced Placement Orientation Night for students and parents. It will be held from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM at Plymouth South High School in the cafeteria. This night will afford students and their families the opportunity to hear about AP classes and the benefits of taking AP classes. The DECA District Competition was held in Quincy on Thursday, February 1st. Marketing students compete for a position to present at DECA States. The Massachusetts Education International Program scheduled a visit last week to Plymouth North with seventeen exchange students from China. The students stayed with host's families and followed a regular schedule with their host student. While in class, they were exposed to the way we teach in the United States with smaller class sizes and interactive classroom environments. Today, we're honored to have teachers from the same area visiting classrooms in our school. In China, generally speaking, class sizes are approximately fifty students to one teacher's. The method of teaching is lecture. Teachers were very interested to hear about classrooms with project-based lessons and smaller class sizes. In addition, many lessons on topics of administration, special education, and scheduling were given. A tour of Plymouth North High School left Chinese students in awe. MCAS Biology tests began today, Monday, February 5th. The last day for makeups is Thursday, February 8th. Come experience an epic night of high fashion. Plymouth North DECA Department presents the Second Annual Fashion Show, the à la mode Fashion Show, on Wednesday, February 7th at 7:00 PM. Tickets are $5 at the door.
Thank you. Megan.
Hello. This Wednesday, we will have our annual Advanced Placement Breakfast and Recognition Event. This year's guest speaker is alumni Audrey Madeiros, who currently works at Woods Hole Ocean and Graphic Institute. Approximately 300 students will be honored for their hard work and dedication in their AP classes. This Friday, we will host the annual Strategies for Success Breakfast for students and parents of academically at-risk freshmen. This event has proven to help reduce our grade nine retention data, which has been at an all-time low over the past few years. Thank you to those PSHS families and employees for hosting our students from China last week. And a big thank you to our student ambassadors who teamed up with our guests by taking them to classes and lunch as well as after-school activities during the week. We had a blast and really enjoyed our time with the students from China. Congratulations to the following music students who auditioned and were accepted to the SEMSBA Music Festival for 2018. For the senior festival, Quinn Woodworth on bassoon, Grade 12. And Lilian Holmes for trombone in Grade 10. For the junior festival, we had Caroline Pereira on flute for Grade 9. The annual tech expo, which was held in PSHS Gymnasium and was followed by the Grade 8 Parent Night, took place last Thursday. Over 1,200 middle school students have the opportunity to visit each of the tech studies exhibits and ask questions. The parent portion focused on the academic program of studies and the many offerings we have at PSHS. Congrats to the wrestling team for capturing their Patriot League title last week and finishing third overall at the state tournament. Also, Coach Mark Larranger earned his 400th career win. Congratulations to the dance team for receiving first-place honors at the Emanuel College Dance Competition this past weekend. And also, congratulations to Kendra McIntosh on being named Patriot League MVP for winter track. And tonight, our Student Council Executive Board is making pillowcases for Ryan's Cases for Smiles. We made over fifteen bright colorful pillowcases, which are donated to children's hospitals to put a smile on the kids' faces. And that's all we have for tonight.
Okay. Thank both of you for that report. Excellent. We're down to old and new business committee members, and we will start with old business. Committee members from the old business list to address any one of those issues. Okay. How about new business? Anybody have any items to bring up? From central office, anything on the new business? No, we don't. Okay. Reports and proposals from the superintendent. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight I have a few items to report on. The first item, I did include this into the agenda. We did get an invitation from the American Society of Curriculum Development, which is really a pretty substantial organization. It's the Association for Supervising Curriculum. And we actually had an invitation with the Center for Secondary School Redesign and ASCD to submit or to... There was an invitation for a team from Plymouth to attend and present at the national conference, which is in Boston this year. So, we're very fortunate for our schools to be selected. And I'd like to just read for you a little bit of what the letter says. It says, "Your school is one of eighteen high-performing K-12 schools selected by both our organizations to share the successful strategies you develop to meet your students' needs. Your commitment to innovative student-centered learning has made your school's story one we believe will benefit all in attendance." So, there will be schools from all over the country that will be there. And we have done work in the past with the Center for Secondary School Redesign. This is the first time that I can recall that we have presented at ASCD, which is one of the premier national opportunities for curriculum development, which is a great honor for our students, excuse me, for our staff. Mrs. Frye, I believe, will be attending and actually helping with the presentation. So, that's an honor for our staff to be recognized, to actually participate in this. So, we will give you some information shortly after they get back and kind of let you know how things went. The next thing that I want to give you an update on is we did move our planetarium grand opening because of weather. And the planetarium grand opening is moved to March 11th, 2018 at 6:00 PM. And that'll be here at PCIS. So, it'll be, once again, the grand opening for the planetarium will be March 11th, 6:00 PM here in this building. It's a Monday. Then...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, then I put it in wrong. The 12th.
Which one is it?
12th.
At 6:00?
The 12th, March 12th.
Monday.
Monday, March 12th. At 6:00. Yes.
No.
And the next item I have to report on is I was not here at the last school committee meeting, and I know that some of you have probably... I know I announced that I was going to be going on the Memory Mission, and I think some of you may have read in the newspaper and online, the trip was a success. And I had the opportunity to actually work with some of Mrs. Hunt's colleagues from the PTA, the National School Board. And I tell you, it was a very exciting opportunity to just go and do some work in the Dominican Republic. You know, the need is great. And one of the things that I really take away from me is, you know, we have need all over the world. You know, we have need in our own country. But one of the things that I really learned while I was there is, you know, you know, our country is so wealthy and we have so many things going for us. And we seem to be so, at times, ungrateful for even when we give and we do things for people. And the Dominican Republic, you know, I really learned that they have so little and are so grateful and so happy that you just spend time with them. And I think it's a great opportunity. And I know tonight we'll hear from some of our teachers that are going to be going again and taking kids. I think it's important for our kids to see that. I think it's important for our kids to actually realize that if they want to see change, it starts with them. And one of the things that I did leave this mission trip realizing is it means absolutely nothing for me to go on a trip like that without doing something. And I think that's one thing I'm excited to do in the future is to look at how we, as adults and students, can do more to try to help people, not only to help them to gain things that they may not have, but how to teach them how to become more sustainable and how to be, you know... It's amazing, Costanza, Dominican Republic is a community of 90,000, and they only have seven schools. We're a community of almost 60,000, and we have 13. And we have kids that don't go to our schools. So, you know, it's amazing that there's so much need there. And I'm motivated to do more, to try to help the Dominican Republic and other communities. And I think we'll be working on that moving forward. And I'm compelled to take a group back and do some work, adults, and try to do some good. And hopefully, we'll involve some more students along the way. The next thing I have to report tonight is we did have... We actually had 36 students visiting from China. They were here for four days. And I want to tell you, I have to give a huge shout-out to our host families. We had numerous host families that actually did a fantastic job. And it was double time because one of those days, it was a snow day. So, we had kids that experienced sledding and man-o-met. We had... I had pictures of kids making snowmen in front yards, which was... They had an unbelievable time. And as Eddie said earlier tonight, that they're very fascinated on how different our education system is. You know, they kind of laughed on Sunday when we introduced the host families to the kids. They were kind of... Got a kick out of how we go to school six hours a day. They go to school about 11 hours a day. And it's very rigorous. And when they went in and they went into some of our classes, they were in awe of the student-teacher ratio compared to what they're used to. But they're also very interested in learning how teachers form relationships with kids. The teachers have said that, the administrators have said that. And, you know, as Dr. Sorensen and I toured numerous schools in China, I think that is a growing theme in China is how do they meld a little bit of both worlds? And that's something that we'll look forward to working on with our colleagues in China moving forward. Next item I have to report is Dr. Campbell is not here tonight. He's in Washington, DC at our Drug-Free Communities Grant Mandatory Meeting. As you're aware, we did receive a $500,000 grant, and he is the key facilitator of that grant. And he had a mandatory meeting that started today, and he will come back on Friday. So, it's almost a full week of finding out what you need to do to meet the guidelines of a federal grant. So, that's what he's there for. And usually, when Dr. Campbell flies, his flight is delayed. But he made it this morning on time, so we're happy that he got there safe. The next item is the last I have to report on, and it's relative to the budget. Mr. Cossin and I met with the Finance Subcommittee for Education about a week ago, week and a half ago. And we spent about two hours with them, just walking through the budget. I think they were very happy that we were open and transparent about how we build the budget. We answered all the questions they had. They did say at the end of the meeting that they don't look forward to a long-town meeting because they believe the budget across the town will be challenging as we enter town meeting. But I think we both felt very good about the conversation, the questions they asked, the dialogue we had. So, we felt good about the meeting. And at this point, we'll just look forward to continuing to spread the word on how we built our budget and what's in it. And we'll look forward to getting ready for town meeting. So, with that said, Dr. Sorensen, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay. Thank you for all that information. Committee members, with any questions or comments following Dr. Maestas' report.
When is town meeting this year, this spring? Do we have a date?
It's April 7th.
Oh, we're in Texas?
We're in Texas, I think.
So, is that... That kind of happens, right? We'll have a couple of members that won't be able to make it because of National School Board, right? I actually had spent most of my time, lunches and so on, with Miranda, who's the National School Board past president. And what a wonderful, wonderful individual. And you know her.
I know her from DC last year.
Yeah. Well, she's a powerhouse. And I tell you, she had an influence on all of us. But it was... You know, and where I first heard about the Memory Mission was at the National School Board Conference when I presented there in San Francisco. And I saw that award. They got an award for being a community service company. And I said, "I would love to go on that. That would be really cool." And who'd have known, all these years later, I would get selected to go. But that was really cool.
Going back to your report on the Chinese students, I understand that Chinese educators are very interested in the way we educate our students, and I think there's a gain from that side. The other way around, I'm hoping there's a way that our students can observe the work ethic of Chinese students.
Absolutely.
And in that case, it'll be a good swap because that's what we... You know, you said, you know, our students take a lot of things for granted that others don't have in the world. I just wish there was a way we could model that work ethic.
Well, you know, Dr. Sorensen, one of the... I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago. One of the takeaways that one of our kids had mentioned when they were at my house, we had the kids over at the house. And one of the parents said, you know, "My daughter's grades are... They've never been so good because they are working side-by-side with their Chinese sister that is there studying in our schools." And it's pretty amazing how they just have this drive to succeed and drive to study. You know, they've been preparing for our MCAS exams, which, to them, are challenging, not because of the content, but because of language. And I will tell you that the amount of time they've put in in preparing has been outstanding. Just they... They're doing really well.
And I would just add to tell the committee that last week, I had a conversation with an attorney from Homeland Security discussing the possibility that the students from China and other countries could spend more than one year here. So, and Dr. Sidman's been... I mean, Dr. Maestas, well, that's a... Many people don't even know who I'm talking about.
I've been here a long time, but not that long.
Dr. Maestas is working on that as well, so it's something we're trying to fix.
Well, we used to. 9/11 is what changed it.
Yeah, 9/11 changed it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Let us move on then, before I mess this up anymore. Retirements, please.
Yes, we have two retirements to report tonight. Carol Faria, who's a cosmetology teacher at Plymouth Health High School for the past 23 years. And Lori Reed, a Grade 2 classroom teacher from West Elementary for 34 years of service.
On behalf of the Plymouth School Committee, we wish these individuals a happy retirement and thank them for the service to Plymouth Public Schools.
Thank you. Correspondence, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, we have two pieces of correspondence this evening. The first is an email to South High Principal Jim Hannah from the Shawshing Valley Technical High School. Counselor Richard Lavoy commending South High for hosting the MAVA Co-op subgroup. And Maureen Kelleher, in particular, for the well-planned day. He praised the positive learning environment and the beautiful new school. The next piece of correspondence is a memo from Superintendent Maestas announcing the class of 2018 seniors who have qualified to receive the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship based on their performance on their Grade 10 MCAS. A list of recipients from both North and South High Schools is included, as well as the information from the Department of Education and how to use the tuition waiver and which Massachusetts colleges and universities accept the Adams Scholarship.
Okay. That's it?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, it's time for our first mid-cycle update. Dr. Maestas?
Yes, tonight, we have Federal Furnace Elementary School, and we have Principal Camaro with her school council. And they are here tonight to present the Federal Furnace Elementary School Improvement Plan and Mid-Cycle Report. So, I would like to welcome the Federal Furnace Elementary School Council and Principal Camaro. Welcome.
Thank you.
And while you're getting settled, let me tell you that I was particularly impressed with the data, measurement data that you presented on Goal 1 in your report. And I'm hoping you're going to reference that this evening.
I am going to reference that. Thank you very much, though. So, I am Principal Trina Camaro from Federal Furnace, and I will let my team here introduce themselves. We do have half of our school council here tonight, which I didn't think was so bad.
Good evening. My name is Chad Ochsner, and I'm a parent.
Is there a hand mic on that table that we can pass along?
Hi, I'm Jen Bates. I'm a fourth-grade teacher at Federal Furnace.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Burke. I am a kindergarten teacher at Federal Furnace.
All right. So, do we usually do the video at the end?
However you want.
However we want. We can do the updates and then do the video at the end. That sounds good to me. So, thank you, everybody, for being here. Thank you for having us. We are excited to present our mid-cycle update. So, we kept our format from last year very similar because we had gotten some positive feedback that it was very easy to read. So, here we have our goals for 2017 on the left to 2019, and then a 2018 update. And we'll just speak to a few of these pieces. So, first, our safe and supportive school goal. We had set out to continue our committee from the past few years formally. But then, what we really found was that safe and supportive is kind of just the way we do business now, and it's the way we make certain decisions. So, I'm going to refer to some of those decisions in a couple of minutes. But we did make some changes, including lunch and recess. So, we had had, you know, what people do is to look at the problem areas. And we had had some behavioral concerns at lunch and recess. So, what we did was we added a lunch and a recess. So, we have fewer kids at each lunch and recess, especially for the lower grades. And we increased the amount of supervision by looking creatively at schedules. So, that's the type of decision we make so that we keep kids safer and happier and learning in our schools. Another change, we did make some changes to our kindergarten transition. So, I'm going to hand that over to Nicole and Chad to talk a little bit more about that.
Absolutely. As a kindergarten teacher, it's very stressful for parents to release their children to us. So, we had tried to make a smooth transition, inviting the parents and the families in multiple times to meet with all of the teachers and to mingle with all of their peers to get to know each other exclusively, not just within their classroom, but within the grade level itself. So, then, at the beginning of the school year, we made a notice to parents that we were going to have kind of a transitioning classroom. We took the students and put them into groups. And during part of the day for the first two weeks, we would take those groups and rotate them to the different teachers so that they could mingle with their peers and other teachers could get to know the students as well. And we felt that it was a great way of integrating a sense of community into the kindergarten grade level because all of the students now feel comfortable with all three teachers, and they're able to come to any of us with any concerns or any exciting news that they want to share with us instead of just going to their one teacher. So, it created a great camaraderie among all three kindergarten levels.
So, I'm the parent of two young toddlers. One was in kindergarten last year, and the second is in kindergarten this year. And it's just been great, the number of opportunities. So, before school even started, we had three chances to come, one for testing. And they've really made some improvements with the testing that my son was excited. He got lots of little toys to bring home. And then, we're able to come for a family night and then the day before they started. So, there's lots of opportunities that either myself and my partner could come and experience the school and make sure he was comfortable.
Thank you very much. And I did want to note specifically that Mrs. Burke has really helped facilitate a lot of these changes. We did make these very specific changes, and families definitely felt it. We've had more than one parent who have had multiple kindergartners in the school recently note these positive changes. So, thank you very much. So, we have some data, as Dr. Sorensen mentioned, and that's on the next slide. But we also have a few anecdotes just about how kids and families are talking about our safe and supportive community. So, one of my friends made me this poster. If you can kind of see on the poster on the board, it's like a floor plan of the school. Mrs. Frye, you would like that. You like floor plans. And she wrote, you know, "Thank you for keeping us safe." But we really did make a lot of changes to the way students are supported in classrooms this year. We have lots of adults in classrooms. Our moderate special needs teachers, by and large, don't have offices anymore. They're in classrooms, and all the paraprofessionals are stationed in classrooms. There's a lot of movement, but because they have their homes in classrooms, almost no teacher is alone for much, many, for any period of time. So, the kids are much more supported, as are the staff. So, Jen, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add to that piece?
In terms of the inclusion?
Yeah, and the culture, kind of that feel of supportiveness.
Yeah. If I had one example that I could use, this morning, I had a student who, in the past, would be considered, you know, somebody who we'd have a difficult time getting her to come to school, you know, for stress reasons and whatnot. And today, she came in and said to me, "I was sick all weekend, and my mom said I could take the day off." And I said, "Oh, well, why are you here?" And she said, "I'm not going to miss school. I want to be here." And that was a great feeling to hear her say that. But also, just the kids, you can tell they feel safe in the building if there is an instance where there's some type of a disruption. They don't even respond. They just keep doing their work. They know everybody's safe and everybody's going to be taken care of. So, there's been a real shift in the way the staff talks about things and the way the students do as well.
And it also extends to accessibility of different things. So, when we show our video at the end, half of the kids who participated in the video participate in our Before School FPTV program, which is typical at all the elementary schools. There's a Before School program. But we also know that we have kids for whom transportation to school before school is quite an issue, and they can't get there. So, we created a special program for during the school day for kids who were in the same age level, had the same level of interest. And that idea actually came up by a few staff members. Rachel Bates, Dan Sylvester, and Diana Rosetti actually came up with this idea. and Diana Rosetti actually came up with this idea, and Jen Mulvaney was right on board when we brought it up to her, and she's been really helpful. So, that's part of this initiative as well, is making sure that all kids feel connected to school and getting through those barriers that could exist. So, some of the results, data-wise, are posted up here. So, we did, we have seen some significant reductions in our discipline codes. They don't add up to that final number at the bottom, because I only posted the three major categories there. I did also artificially inflate this year's data, just in case we accidentally didn't record something. I wanted to make sure that we inflated it right from the beginning, and I inflated those numbers by 10%. And still, there shows a significant reduction in the instances of battery disorderly conduct and safety violations. So, safety violation is when a teacher feels that they need another adult in the room because a child's behavior may be concerning. And that is related to our crisis prevention intervention protocol through that training that we do. So, that's what that means. So, that was mentioned earlier, and I wanted to make sure that I clarified that. So, on to our next goal, which is rigorous curriculum and instruction, which of course is really, really important. Our biggest goal was to focus our PD on making sure that we're meeting students' academic needs, meeting them where they're at and moving them forward. The district has had a huge focus on inclusion this year, and that means inclusion of students at all levels, not just students who are struggling, but students who may be academically advanced as well. And we've had a professional named Lisa Decker come to the district multiple times, and we've really taken great advantage of this. For example, Jen and some of her teammates went to a special training just last week to follow up on the larger training that Lisa did at the full-day PD in October. And our entire school year of building-based PD, so our professional development when staff stays in our building, is a continuation of that inclusion. So, we've used her worksheets, her models, and we've integrated those into the building-based work that we're doing to continue that work. So, we are really focused on that. Also, this goal was about using our resources, such as our coaches, and using all of the structures in place, such as grade-level meetings, staff meetings, to review data, to talk about our curriculum, to do curriculum mapping and pacing. Does anyone want to add to that, staff?
I was just going to share about our technology.
Yep.
What I use for our classroom. As a parent and a teacher, it's often helpful to be able to check in with the teacher throughout the day. And I utilize a great app that I had shared during our PD, which is called Apple Tree, and it's a way for parents to stay connected. And it is almost as similar to a Facebook page, but the parents need a access code to access the information, and students' pictures are posted on there, things that we do throughout the day. I also share information with parents of important things coming up. Parents can message me and ask for any progress reports on their child, any things that their child might be struggling with, so that they can help them at home with it. And parents can also, like, like the pictures, they can comment on them. So, it's a social, but also informational for all the families. And I've gotten great response last year out of my 18 children. I had 16 parents signed up for it. This year, I have 21 students, and I have 19 parents that have joined it. So, it's a great way for them to stay in constant contact. If anything comes up, they can reach out to me, or they can reach out to other parents and communicate as well. So, I really have enjoyed using that, and I had shared that at one of our professional developments.
And it's very important for parents to see pictures of what their kids are doing. I think it reinforces the rigor in the instruction and the methodologies that we use. That was something school council talked about last year in writing this plan, that it's important for us to use rigorous methods, but also to publicize them and to show families the types of things that we're doing.
Absolutely. And when you're a new parent and you wonder for the first week of school, "What is my child up to all day?" They can just pop on there, and I take pictures. I post things every other day of pictures of everything we're doing, little things from reading to adding and different things, so just parents have an update, because your child comes home usually, and you say, "What'd you do today?" Nothing. So, this gives them an insight on to what their child really is doing every day.
And in addition to, many of the classrooms are using Class Dojo, which has some similar options. Some classes do have closed Facebook pages, so that the families are on just with that teacher. We have our Federal Furnace Facebook page, and Mrs. Burke's class is on there today for freezing and melting, if you want to see what they're doing in science. So, we're trying to really focus on posting, not just the feel-good moments, but the academic moments as well. And support and innovation. I think I'm going to have Jen Bates talk a little bit about that.
In terms of what I'm...
Our staff support.
Oh, yeah. So, we had, recently had a choice PD session where we had staff members train other staff members on areas of expertise that they happen to have. In this case, it was technology, using technology to work in an inclusion setting, and how can you differentiate for all learners. One of the most impressive things from the Lisa Decker thing that I brought away from it was you, this is truly all children, and like Trina was saying, even the kids that are that much farther ahead. I loved how she included them in her model. So, we had a great discussion in some of the PDs about what can we do for those kiddos who really need a little bit extra? How can we get them to dig a little bit deeper into the content? And I think a lot of people walked away feeling like they had something to work with. A couple people have come to me and commented about how they've already tried things. Everybody was really excited about trying the new things. And also, the, when you're hearing it from someone who's a peer, I think it's just so well-received when you're learning from somebody that's doing the same thing that you're doing every day. So, that was, I think, really one of the most productive things that we've done this year.
So, we've been doing a lot of that type of work with this inclusion. The way we started our building-based in services for the year was with a team building in service, and Nicole's smiling over there.
It was fun.
It was a lot of fun. We had it facilitated by our physical education teacher and one of the physical therapists in the district, and they had us as teams work together. So, we worked on collaboration, communication, and as we've said, we've been continuing that throughout the year. Staff love to learn from each other, and it's really important to support each other. And up here on our PowerPoint, we list a couple of our other support networks. We are part of the Bright Network, because we have a transitional learning center, and our staff is learning quite a bit about working with kids with significant social-emotional needs, and that's been a real bonus, because all of that training is a part of that collaboration. So, they have ongoing supports. So, on to the next. So, part of the way that we also are supporting staff is through a staff website, so we keep up with it regularly, and "we" is usually "me." But we, these collaborative things are on there. So, every in-service, every staff meeting, every grade-level meeting, there's a page on the website, and there's collaborative tools on there. So, for example, during that technology in-service, their ticket to leave and head out was having to post on the Google Doc about what they had learned, what their goal was, who they learned it from. And then that document is also then posted as a final document in a PDF format on the website. So, anyone who maybe missed it or wasn't in that room during that particular session can see, "Oh, if I want to learn this particular tool, I can go to this person right here in our building, and I can learn how to do that." Oh, so-and-so's also trying that, so I can go to them and continue the learning.
Can I add something about that as a staff member?
Of course.
I use the website almost every day. I love that everything is in one place, but I also love that all the previous staff meetings are in there, because, you know, you're trying to say, "Oh, we learned about something I know it was a couple months ago," and you can't find it, it's all right there for you, so it makes it a lot easier.
And of course, we like to have fun. And when staff feel supported, they come up with their own ideas for fun. So, this was a staff idea to have a storybook dress-up day. It happened to be on Halloween also, so it was really fun for the kids to come in and have their teachers dressed in their favorite storybook characters. That's just one example of staff doing something for the building and building community. Yes, I do have something to add. Thank you. As a new teacher, I felt that our staff has been working really hard last year and this year to show parents that we do want to be there for the fun things at school, not just curriculum. We've been making an effort to have a teacher volunteer at every PTA meeting. We've been having teachers volunteer in lots of the fun things that happen at night, like last week there was bingo, and we had several teachers who came back and did bingo with families. So, it's a great community engagement to show families to, that we're there, not just to educate their children, but also to be part of the community and part of their family. And I feel that it's very important for families to see that. And our community engagement group that we work in right now is currently working on a couple different ideas of ways to reach out to all of our members of the community and make them all feel like they're part of our school, which is very important to us as a community. And I was just going to give the example of our Halloween dress-up day. It's already been covered. Great. So, that was a great segue, it kind of was the end of one goal and into the next one, because our final goal on our plan is our, to expand family and community partnerships. And sometimes it's hard to separate these goals, because they're all so much related. So, that is an important piece, that we have had great collaboration. PTA, there is a "T" in there, and we do have a lot of staff who participate in our PTA events. Also, this year with the change from being a targeted assistance Title I program to the school-wide Title I program, we made that a big focus at Open House, to do the Title I homeschool compacts together, and to kind of go through how we partner with families. And Brendan Brady, who's another school council member who was not able to be here tonight, he really wanted me to highlight that. He was going to talk about that if he was here tonight. And he actually was doing an internship in Mrs. Bates' classroom, and he mentioned something that she said at Open House when presenting the compact, which was that parents need to know that they're on the team too. And going through each piece of the homeschool compact, there's a piece of what the school's responsibility is, what the parent's responsibility is, and what the student's responsibility is. And I read over the loudspeaker, the school's responsibility. The teacher read the parent responsibilities, and the parent was supposed to read the student responsibilities to them. And then there was a goal-setting activity. So, that's the type of thing, we're not talking, we're talking about partnerships as far as organizations and maybe donations of time or energy or goods, but it's also a different kind of engagement. How are families helping their students to learn, and how are we really partnering together? Did anyone want to add to that piece?
I just think it's important for parents to know that they're part of the education. It's not just the school's job to educate them, it's a community, it's all of us. We're all in it together to benefit your child, who is our child, who is everyone's child. So, I think, you know, expressing that more to the parents and just reiterating it over and over will eventually help these parents understand that we all need to work together to make these children the, you know, the adults that they're going to be someday.
And the kids need to know that everyone is on the same page.
Absolutely.
So, part of our original goal was to look at a volunteer training for our parents, to get them more engaged. And as we started to look at the data in terms of who has been interacting with our schools, we realized that maybe we need to shift that a little bit to think about how are people engaging with us, not necessarily going the route of creating a volunteer program, which we may do a little bit. But we spent some time in our school council meeting, trying to determine who is coming and who is not, and how are they engaged? Because we have a lot of engagement in some of the PTA activities, so those parents are connecting and probably in a way that makes sense for them and their schedules. Not everyone has the opportunity to come and volunteer or to come during a parent-teacher conference, so we're looking at ways to kind of collect the data to figure out how many parents are really engaging and what level they're engaging, so we can then target those. And one of the things that we actually, the school did this year, is we reached out to everyone who didn't come to Open House, and we made sure they had all the information that they missed by not attending. And part of that was, I believe, a survey to figure out
Why.
what prevented you from coming, so we can kind of look at some of those barriers for next year.
Definitely. And we did that electronically and hard copy. So, we sent out all of the handouts from Open House to everybody, whether they were there or not. And then we did do an individual envelope for all families who we had on our record as not attending. We did get some responses, like, "I was there, I just forgot to sign in." But the survey results were very interesting, because the people who weren't there felt connected, at least they expressed that. They said, "Well, the teacher had already called, and we've had numerous conversations and numerous emails, or I'm on that Facebook page." So, that was part of the thought, that we may need to rethink this goal a little bit. What exactly are we trying to accomplish here? We want people to be connected, and there are different ways of doing that. And we are almost done. Just a little picture about our community connections, and just wanted to let everyone know that Federal Furnace has a long tradition of engaging kids outside of school and in school. So, we did do a few things this summer. Jen, do you want to share a little bit about that?
Sure. We worked with the community to make a garden, and the kids actually came, they took turns over the summer, they could sign up to come and take care of the garden. And once we started to produce vegetables, they were able to pick them and bring them home, or decide if they wanted to donate them, or what was going to happen with the vegetables. I came at least once a week to kind of check in, and they also logged what the garden produced, and they wrote about how they felt about how it was going. So, it was kind of a cool little project where they could reflect on what they were doing, they loved it, they want to do it again. And we actually get a lot of really great stuff out of it. And the picture up there on the right is from our book event, where we, we had two of them. One, we went out to Algonquin Heights, to the community center, and we had some students, whoever was around, some of them were at camp, but we got a really great turnout anyway, and we met with them, we gave them free books, we actually helped, even some of the alumni came down, and we helped them with the list for the summer reading for PCIS or the math, and they got to see their old teachers. So, that was really fun, and it was well-received. The one at the school, we had a few people, but it was, we wound up kind of, you know, it was a tough week, because people are on vacation, and we've been talking about how we'll set that up this summer, so that we can do more and give parents more notice so that they can be there. But it was really great to see the kids over the summer and kind of keep the connection going.
And if you haven't seen the tomato sauce videos, we are on the tomato sauce videos, Video Two, Federal Furnace's feature, because we did participate in the tomato sauce initiative. And I just want to thank all of our school council members, our community, and all of you for having us present, and we can show our video.
Thank you for coming to Federal Furnace.
Our school uses the zones of regulation to help make sure all of the students are in control of their actions and working on problem-solving skills. We also focus on making sure all the needs of our students are being met. We are one of the top schools who utilize the free breakfast program, which helps kids get off to the right start. We also have a kindness wall. The kindness wall is you write something kind on it, and then you roll above it, stick it...
Federal Furnace is lucky enough to have a garden at our school. The permaculture club helps run a before-school club with help from our families and students.
Something very exciting in the works is we are apparently working with Heritage Plantation on learning how to set up an outdoor classroom.
Students here at Federal Furnace have many opportunities to be leaders. Our school has a student council, fourth and fifth-grade students meet once a month, where they discuss how to make the school a better place.
Another student leadership opportunity is the peer mentoring programs. Student in fourth and fifth do one-to-one mentorship with younger grades. We also have buddy-class rooms, where cross-level grades get to work and collaborate.
Some of our technology students are currently working on learning how to code and program robots. We are really excited to have virtual reality goggles come into our classrooms very soon.
In library class, we are doing lots of exciting things as well. We recently created holograms by making a four-dimensional pyramid and placing it upside down on a tablet.
We will be joining a second-grade classroom to observe centers. Some things you will notice are the flexible seating options, technology to meet the needs of all students, and classroom libraries.
This is a writer's workshop. Like...
Like in math, students are working at their own pace within a unit. There's a mini lesson, and then students practice it in their own writing and share their work at the end.
Do you have any questions, or are we all set?
Ms. Hunt.
I, as somebody that's worked in the field of family and community engagement for almost 20 years now, I really appreciate all of the work that you're doing to engage your families and all of the different, different, you know, unique ways that you're trying to get parents engaged, especially with going to Algonquin Heights. So I would recommend to you to work with your PTA. PCIS has actually earned this award a couple of times, but they have a School of Excellence Award, and it's based on family engagement. So have them look at, it's on the PTA website. And all the schools that get the School of Excellence, Excellence Award, get nominated to get the Phoebe Appleston Hearst Award, which also has a monetary reward as well. So I think with your unusual and all of the things that you do in your school, you'd be great at it, and I think you'd have no problem getting that award. And if you go to PCIS, they have a banner out front that says they're a school of excellence in family engagement, so.
Thank you very much for that.
Recommend that. And if they need help, they can call, they know they can call me.
Thank you.
Ms. Patrick.
I was just going to say, that was a great presentation. And I just want, this might be a question for Gary, that when you guys are talking about what you're doing with the kindergarteners and taking them around, I just think that sounds like a great idea to create the community that you're talking about. I mean, they're brand-new, and it's a big community that they're entering. Is that something we're thinking about doing at our other schools? Because if it's really helping with that transition, it'd be a perfect thing to use in the other.
That's one of the things that I think we're really trying to make that first experience and a return experience for our families a lot easier. And I think that's one of the things that we have heard from parents is how to make that welcome into the district a lot more easy, not only from coming in and touring, but even the paperwork that we've talked about before, so that it's not so cumbersome and it doesn't feel like you're buying a house. I think it's actually easier to buy a house than.
Any other questions or comments?
Okay, that was a great report. Thanks for the video, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, everybody.
So now we have Patrick Van Cott and Patty Callahan from Food Services. Dr. Mestes.
Yes, we are pleased to have our food service group come in tonight and present to you an update on our food service program. They are always looking at ways to try to stay in the profit-making arena with food service, which is difficult, because as you know, it's a challenge to keep our food costs down. With the, with the tastes of our young students and the palate that they have, how do we try to have a menu that is going to be somewhat nutritious, but yet on the other side profitable? Which, I'm not sure anyone in the community realizes this, but when we do our budget presentations, the Food Service Department isn't on that budget presentation role because they are 100% self-sustaining, which is, I don't know if Patrick and Patty have this information, but there aren't a whole lot of districts in the country that have a food service program that runs in the black every year. It's very difficult to do, but I think it's also invoked a little bit of the entrepreneurship model for a district to look at how they can try to generate some funding to keep the program up and running. So with that said, I'll turn it over to you guys and let it roll.
Thanks.
Thank you very much for having us once again on the, after the Super Bowl. That's all I'm going to say about that. To begin the, we have to do, we're luckily, we have the size district that we have. It provides us with a lot of opportunity to increase our revenues and do different things and think outside of the box. So the mundane here is the 14 schools and sites, and we say the schools and sites because we've added onto that. Additionally, to our 12, we have Rising Tide and the Council on Aging that we feed every single day. We feed 8,195-plus students breakfast and lunch. Free and reduced lunch percentage right now is at 32.79%. That's as of October. And our total is 719,000 lunches and 189,000 breakfasts per year. So we're almost to that big mark there. We have a total of 70 total employees, one secretary-bookkeeper, who we couldn't do without, two van drivers, one goes north, one goes south every day, four managers, eight team leaders, 53 cafeteria workers, and myself and Patty. In addition to the breakfast and lunch programs, we do a summer food service that was serving, last year was about 20,000 meals. This year, because of adding a lot of different meal times, we've done breakfast and then snack as well at a lot of the sites. And we're doing the four sites, and the total was 23,016 meals. That all converts into reimbursable monies. And it's at Camp Clark, the Boys and Girls Club, PCIS, and Hedge Elementary School, which is an open site. Anyone can go there under the age of 18. Council on Aging, it's exactly as we predicted. It was very, very staggered in about how many participants we were having, and now we're doing, on the average, about 45 a day. Some days are much higher than others due to different activities that they have throughout the week. Some are onsite, some are offsite. We do five days a week year-round. We staff it. And if not anything, we've, we've really had a great community partnership with them. That's, that's the best moment about going in there and recognizing people every time you go in there. Excuse me. On a daily basis, we do the Alternative Learning Program, about 40 people a day, Pilgrim Academy, around 20 a day, all the Memorial Hall events, catering, so many different functions I can't even name. The Plymouth, the Early Education Program, and then Rising Tide, for the, all for the school calendar year of 108 days. We are staying afloat mainly because of all the different things that we're doing, and it's mainly the, the contracts that we've, we've brokered over the, over the years. Our additional food service program's brought in about 10 years ago, about $70,000. This year, we'll hit around $200,000. So it's a little, little above and beyond the traditional breakfast and lunch programs, so. Lunch choices, we've learned the hard way through, that the kids are as fickle as they come. And it's constantly changing. And we found that out, I'll give you a friend, it's like we do at the elementary schools, the hot meal, a sort of sandwich and soups. The secondary schools, a bistro, a lot of grab-and-goes because of the limited time to eat. World's Fair is the hot meal of the day. And then we do Papa Gino's and Uno's Pizza. Papa Gino's is driving the elementary school sales, like there's no tomorrow. And the kids don't get bored of it. The secondary schools, however, after about two or three months, just go, "Ah, it's Papa Gino's. Can't we get something different?" After you spent all the time brokering the deal. So that's, that's an example of how the marketing works, name-brand recognition, et cetera. But it does change, and I mean, like the tide. One of our favorite things that we did this past year was the tomato sauce initiative that Trina referred to. And Brian Palladino, being different than he is, decided to have guest servers of the pasta and the sauce that we made out of the tomatoes themselves. That was a lot of fun, and he, of course, drafted me to, to serve next to him. We had the Chief of Police and some other guest servers throughout the year. The Chief of Police is very generous with his helping with the pasta. Food cost was off, off the charts that day.
The kids liked coming in and having them serve.
A lot of fun. And it's just part of the garden-to-school initiatives. A lot of people think the farm-to-school, and we put the gardens in, thanks a lot of help to all the different people who've contributed. The DOD Fresh Fruits and Programs, I was hesitant to, like, what are we going to get from a program that's called Department of Defense? It is unbelievable, the fruits and vegetables. And it really, and it goes to, it's allocated dollars from the government that go to military bases and schools. So you learn all, never thought I'd be learning about all these different things. But the, the produce itself is unbelievable, and it cost us nothing. So it's even better than that. Helps our food cost. All right, so we had three-year cycles for review, and I'm still recovering from it. It was the week before Christmas. We had three reviewers come on, and they stay on for five days onsite and make you jump through hoops, et cetera. Everyone knows about the CPR reviews. This is our, our review. And a lot of it's, it's good to make sure that you know what you're doing, number one. You're a lot more accountable now than ever. The amount of documents that I had to upload for them to review was just staggering. You had some I had to split because it was too large to send to them, but that's part of the game. And it's, they review your policies, procedures. Are you doing what you're saying you're doing? Are you serving what you're saying you're serving? You know, if all of a sudden a kid says, "Why don't we have french fries this week?" Then it means you're doing something wrong, so. Nutrition analysis and guidelines, staff development and training, which is a big part that you have to do now. And then the community eligibility program at Hedge was reviewed, too. And because that's a federally mandated program, that is really close to being cut again. So it may go away, unfortunately, which is a sad Washington thing that's happening. Resource Management Comprehensive Review, this is our financial review. And they felt the necessity to do this to schools because so many different school districts are running in the red. So what they do is they make sure you can understand what a profit-loss statement is, a balance sheet, and how to stay afloat, and what are you doing to stay afloat. So they go over for three days all the different components of the profit-loss statement. And one thing that we did have that stuck out a little bit, but everyone else is going through the same thing, is our lunch charges. We don't deny anyone a lunch at all. And they make it kind of difficult, because what happens is you, you get all your lunch components, you come up to the POS system, and they say, "You owe $200." So at that point, we're not going to take the meal away from them and hand them a cheese sandwich and an apple and a milk. So we're, we're in a precarious situation here of what to do, and the best thing to do is to come up with a policy, unfortunately. I'm sure Chris Campbell is excited about that as well.
Sure he is.
I'm glad he's not here this evening. But I'll be sending him a rough draft. I've been beg-borrowing, stealing a bunch of different communities' worth of policies, and we've got to come up with something because the, it becomes a staggering amount after a while. It's up over, sometimes it fluctuates up to about $25,000 that's owed to us. And sometimes the kids don't understand that it's not this abyss, you know, thing that you can't just go to McDonald's and say, "Yes, put it on my tab," you know? It doesn't happen like that. So we've got to debunk that thought process and start educating everyone that this is a monetary thing, and you have to be responsible for the debt because it's climbing. So I'll be sending him a rough draft. Student trends, I've often spoken that it was going to be a roller coaster of participation due to the regulations, and we're seeing a slight upswing right now, which is really good. So kids are getting used to all the different, you know, the whole wheat, the whole grains and things like that. Our à la carte sales, you know, continue to take a hit. However, it's starting to come back as a roller coaster as well, too. Where we were once at $187,000 in sales, we're now at 74, so it's starting to swing back. It's starting to come back. And it's mainly because the manufacturers are starting to make products that are actually taste good. So it's come, come a long way.
Important. Especially with kids.
Yeah. Our breakfast participation is another component that's really, really carrying us. And it's another reimbursement source. We're up over 1,000 breakfasts a day. So a lot of times, that will be everyone's meal. They'll come in at that point, and some people can just eat a meal of the day, and then they'll go home and eat, you know, after-school snacks, something along that lines, but they treat that as a meal period as well. Some of our biggest expenses, food has climbed to about 1.1 million. The healthy ingredients cost more. Labor is at 1.17 million and climbing. The yearly, yearly cost of living increases. Health insurance is our, our big one, and I purposely put in fiscal year 13 because it was $266,000, and now it's $360,000. So it's gone up $100,000 in five years. And we are still self-sufficient. So we have to stay ahead of the curve is, is the bottom line of it. And I was banking on it, and like, for instance, the Rising Tide contract and Council on Aging, things like that, and it's helping us immensely, so. Start looking at the towns around us. The other part about that, though, and I have to recognize it and give recognition to our, my staff, is that we are at our max right now. If I ask one of my drivers, for instance, to go off-road and deliver one thing, it will throw him completely off for the day to get the food to the students. We're at that brink of, you know, to either add another, you know, small department or a person, something along that lines, if we're going to take on more responsibilities. Just being honest. Our total other expenses mount very quickly to $150,000. Fuel, meals tax, uniforms, vehicle repairs, which are getting more and more. Software continues to increase, license renewals, equipment repairs, that's a, that's a huge one. We're, knock on wood, doing okay this year. We lost some coolers last year, things like that, some big-ticket items, but we seem to be sustaining this year. One of the big things is our revenue is, is $2.8 million a year. And of that, our reimbursements for selling students lunch is 1.4. It's one, it's one-half of it. So that's always our mainstay. That's, that's our, our main component of what we want to do. We want to, we want to give a child a reimbursable meal, a good nutritious meal, and that always remains that. And that's why we're staying afloat, because you sell more meals, the reimbursement gets larger. Any questions?
Just to comment, every year you come and you present this, this data to us, it's amazing. It's just amazing, all the meals you serve, the fact that you are not in the budget that you serve. It's just amazing. Job very, very well done. Very well done. Patty, you too, as well.
I was just going to ask, on the, on the summer meals, they pay a certain amount to come in, yeah?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It's above and beyond. It's a, like, $3.50 is what they pay us for a meal.
Okay.
So it's important to get qualified. One of my biggest things I'm trying to do this year, if you go over 50%, for instance, down at Camp Clark, they have about 400 kids there a day. We're doing about, about 180 meals there a day, but if I can get that free and reduced lunch percentage to 50%, everybody eats for free. And I'll get back that $3.50 per meal. So a lot of these kids come from different towns. They come from Pembroke or Kingston or something like that. So it's in my best interest to start shaking the tree ahead of time, get everyone's names who's on the roster. And it's very difficult, because a lot of, a lot of parents will quite literally enroll their child the Sunday before the Monday time. So it gets difficult for me to go and say, "All right," and then submit it to the state, get the approval, and then all of a sudden, we become a free site. But we're really close every year, or like 42, 43% every single year, so. I'm going to reach out to the different communities, and I can get their, the names of their kids that are participating, and we can hopefully get to that mark.
And also, do you, on the Council on Aging, you're just doing the meals that are eaten within the facility?
Yes, exactly.
You're not doing the meals on wheels?
No. They stare at it a lot, but.
Sit on your hands and say no.
Don't want to do that.
Mr. Begley.
Good presentation. I thought I remembered a few years ago, we talked
I thought I remembered a few years ago, we talked about policy on when there's an outstanding balance. And I, did we agree that we would never mention to the child that there was an outstanding balance, that we would always reach out to the parents, that the child wouldn't be embarrassed in front of peers and stuff like that?
We, we do it if you want to...
We tell the kid quietly, or we write it on a piece of paper and hand it to them so that they know that they're charging. A lot of kids don't even know. They think that they have money on the account, and so when they go through, they just put their five-digit number, like, "Thank you," but they don't know, some of them, that they owe money. So the child will say to them, "Hold on a second, Hundy," and then she'll send them a piece of paper that says, "You owe $52," so that the child... We also send home every other week a letter to the parents via email. And for any balances, we also send them registered mail.
Good, good.
U.S. postage.
Thank you.
Mr. Costin.
Thank you. Patrick, can you just address where we are in the pricing of our meals and any potential increases?
Great point. One reason why our revenues are down slightly in the meals is because we went from $2.75, I don't know if you remember, $2.75 to $3 this past year. We went up a quarter. And that will sustain us for, and I'll put my neck on the line like I did last time, for three years at least. So I like to go up in the, rather than go up in the dime nickel increments, it just slows the line down when you're doing cash sales. And it's, it's better to get to that point and then have the rest of the world attempt to catch up at this juncture. But also, one neat part about our, I feel like we're somewhat modern, is that our online payments are, over 50% of our revenues are online payments, which is great. That speeds up the lines immensely, so it's...
This month, we took in $63,000 on online payments. About $2,000, $3,000 a day.
Ms. Badger.
Do you have to pay credit card fees on that?
Yes, you do.
A dollar ninety-five.
And it's per, so you can do up to, upwards of, for instance, my child eats a lot, so I put like $120, which is the max you can put on. And you put it on, and it's still that, what dollar, is it?
Dollar seventy-five.
Dollar seventy-five.
And that, that's, the parent pays the fee.
That's correct.
The parent pays the fee.
Yes.
We don't, the parent does.
Yeah, oh, no, no, we don't.
Convenience that they'll...
Yeah.
I mean, Patty does it all the time. She's always talking about...
Yeah, she's probably doing it right now, yeah.
Little Cooper's always...
She's one of those notes.
Cooper's a great customer, yeah. We know what he likes.
He likes Coco G notes.
Okay, any, any other questions? That was great. Thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We are going to take a break and resume our meeting at 8:20. Thank you.
Overnight field trip to discuss. Dr., may I ask this?
Yes, tonight we have an overnight field trip, and this is a, a out-of-country field trip, and that's why it's here. It was here last year. And the group is actually traveling this April to the Dominican Republic. They're doing a service project, and this is coming up well in advance to be able to give the school committee opportunity to, to listen to the, to the field trip opportunity for kids. But I'll turn it over to Tara and Mary, they're here tonight to bring any information that we can shed for the school committee, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody, and thank you for having us. As you know, I'm Tara Frere.
And Mary Raymond.
So this is our fourth time in front of everybody presenting the same trip, but with a little different spin on it this year. So we've had great success the last three years, well, two years, and we have an upcoming trip that was approved last year for April 12th, where we have 20 students. This year, returning to the same spot, El Castillo, very close to where Gary was, actually. And we have had a great success with EF Tours in the past, but there's been some limitations that we felt as teachers. And I really can't say enough to how much this trip has affected not only the children in need in the Dominican, but the students here in Plymouth. The emails that we get from parents, the testimonials from the kids, we have kids that return every year. And as you guys know, EF Tours is a little pricey, so we've, we've found a little frustration, I guess you could say, with that, with the price. And some of the other reasons why we kind of changed things up this year was, we really have formed an incredible partnership with the foundation that we work with, at the Sister Foundation that we work with in the Dominican, and that we have worked with for the past two years and will work with again this year. And we really would like to take more charge of the project and have a little more flexibility. For instance, last year, typically how the trip goes is we fly into Santo Domingo, there's a little cultural tour, we head up and do the service work, and then we head out of the mountains the last day for like an excursion. Last year, the students really wanted to stay in the service area and skip the snorkeling, which I would have totally been in support of. And we couldn't because it wasn't EF-approved. This year, I begged, 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 begged EF to not do the cultural tour because we have a lot of repeat students going. They've done it twice, I've done it four times, and just to get to the mountains and get busy and roll our sleeves up and work. And they really were, didn't want to hear it. They, they want to do it their way, which is that they're a very successful company, and I have to respect that. So from the very first time that Mary and I went, we, we just, I think we both saw something so much bigger. So this summer, we got together with some other educators in Plymouth and some other people, some representatives from the local Rotary, and some other business people from the South Shore. And we actually formed a nonprofit, and we called it Partnering People Through Service to kind of play on the PPS school acronym there, because that's where we're getting our roots here. And our mission statement is really clear. We want to form partnerships between students here and communities in need to assist communities to improve education and develop sustainable practices in commerce. Some of the things that we've done so far down there, just quickly, so here's a little brief history. There's El Castillo, it's a really unique community up in the mountains. These are some of our students from last year. That little tiny building that you see behind them is the schoolhouse that houses K through six, most of the students in El Castillo, which is now being moved crazily enough to where Gary was, in the Rio Grande area. They don't really have an opportunity to go past the sixth grade, and that's a real problem, I think, we can all agree. This would be a typical house in the community. There might be 15 to 16 people living in that small little house. There's a big epidemic of, obviously, teenage pregnancies there. There's a lot of need. So we stay at the Villa Pahone Eco Lodge. It's a low-impact eco lodge, which goes right along with my environmental training, where there's solar heat. The kids are cut off from the internet, which I really like because they are really, they get a little crazy, cranky about it, I think, when we first get there, but then at the end, they really kind of sad to pick their phones up again.
Grateful to the experience.
Really grateful, yeah. So this is just the, the community lodge there. Again, there's the schoolhouse, that you can see how tiny it is. So some projects that we have done in the past, in 2016, we had a student from Plymouth North, her dad, I think, worked at, I want to say Children's Hospital, and he was kind enough to, to round up about 10? 10 laptops, maybe? And we brought them down. And just as a, for a personal note, you know, that was the first year we had gone down, and you're always a little wary when you go to these organizations because you don't know. And we brought, we plugged this huge duffel bag of these laptops down, and it kind of just got plunked on the side, and they were like, "Oh, yeah, okay, thanks." And we didn't really hear much about them. And Mary and I even discussed on the plane, like, well, gee, like, what's going to happen to those laptops? They didn't really address it. We were busy the whole time. We planted 800 trees in four days. We built 14 nesting boxes and constructed and installed them for an endangered bird. Kids had a phenomenal time, but those laptops were always in the back of my mind. Well, when Mike Bastoni and I got there last year, they had all the laptops out, they had been converted into Spanish, and the kids were able to take those laptops and donate them and put them in the school. These are still 2016 pictures, but there's our group. We had update pictures from our, from the organization showing us the eggs in the nesting boxes. So last year, we installed a solar panel to that little school and electrified it, which was, I can't tell you how exciting that was for our students and for the students there who had never, ever even seen a computer. The kids were able to install the laptops and one-on-one, sit with the students and teach them how to use PowerPoint, how to use Word. They had no internet, but nonetheless, it was so powerful. They did some sign-making for some ecotourism in the town, and they cleaned and cleared the trees that we had planted the year before. So you can see that this is a really sustainable project. And here's the kids with their laptops and with our students as well. Whoops, I want to go back. I guess there's, they do lessons together, just these impromptu lessons where the Plymouth students are brushing up on their Spanish and learning Spanish and teaching these kids. We play chess with them. We played baseball for a few hours with a stick and a sock. That's, the woman there in the blue coat is our boots on the ground, Rosie, she's amazing. She's a Rotarian from Santo Domingo who's with us 24/7 there. So we're making global connections. There's the baseball game, you can see the jacket is one of the bases. That little girl in the middle there is playing Emmy Kelly, who we all know from her famous "Gary Make the Call" song. That's her ukulele. And then here is the group with nesting houses and making the signs for the ecotourism. So needless to say, a picture paints a thousand words. These are life-changing experiences. So Mary and I kind of came up with trying to take on the task of forming this nonprofit in the hopes of bringing the price of the trip down. We have very solid connections in the Dominican, so the trip will remain exactly the same. We're going to cut out the, the tour in the city and scuba diving or snorkeling at the end because the kids, they don't really want it. They want to be in the community and they want to work. So we've changed the itinerary a little bit. We have partnered with Sister Program this year. So this year, we're still with EF because it was planned last year, but we've raised for donations over $3,000 to have the kids, we're ordering parts for the kids to build a solar generator for the computer. Mike Bastoni is the mastermind behind that, but we've done some fundraising. So our hopes are to offer the kids from the whole district, hopefully open it to South as well, for two trips next year, April vacation, and potentially the end of June for when school is over, which may be a little tricky because we'd have to wait till we know, we don't have any more snow days. But I know kids have come and told us that they want to go in April, but they have commitments with maybe drama or sports or something, and that they can't go at that time of year. We've done some preliminary budget, and we, we are pretty solid on that we think we can get the trip right around $2,000, which is significantly cheaper than EF. And we also hope to offer some scholarships and have a panel of maybe some admin, maybe even some school committee, identify the needs of kids who couldn't afford to go, even if it was a little bit less. And with our fundraising ideas and donations that we're getting through the nonprofit, have some scholarships available for students from Plymouth. So that is our plan.
That's a wonderful plan. Absolutely wonderful.
Yeah, we're so excited about it.
Everybody in this committee feels like, wow.
Yeah, we're so excited about it. We really are. We have a great team. Unfortunately, we didn't bring the whole board of directors from the nonprofit, but we have an incredible team behind us, and we just think it's very serendipitous that Gary was right down where we're going to be. So we're really hoping to make this a community with a Rotary involved, a community-based, school-based effort where Plymouth is really a shining star of community service. And hopefully, we can, like Gary said, expand domestically, do some stuff, and, you know, maybe in the future have even other locations. But we're super excited about it.
What's really ironic is the community that they've been working in, the Dominican government is actually moving the whole city, the whole town, from that location to Rio Grande.
To where he was. Yeah.
So the work that they're doing will impact that whole community. But apparently, there is some ruins beyond this area where they're working now, where the students have been working, and apparently they're going to make a national park?
They're actually housed within the national park right now. So the government, we knew about this last year when we went, that it was in the works, that the government, there was a, they were sustainably, well, you saw how poor they are, but the little money they were making was from agriculture. And the government came along and said, "You know what? We don't want agriculture in the park anymore." And they literally just, we were there for the last harvest, which was so sad, last year, they were pulling up the last carrots of their harvest. So these poor people who had creaked out this little, little existence in these mountains and had this farming as their livelihood has now, it's just been ripped out from under them. We had helped make it, well, not helped, but we helped build a sustainable stove for a jam-making business for the women. And Jose, who runs the Sister Organization, one of the things he wants to do this year is maybe try to move that jam station because they're just, they're just uprooting them, which is hard to believe.
Yeah, I, I was surprised at what was happening, but the needs, as you heard earlier, are significant. I think projects like this are wonderful for the kids to be part of, which that's a significant...
We brought some donations down last year, and we had brought down some toothbrushes, just basic donations. And we had the kids partner up, and they were giving them out, and I'll, Joe Kelly, who you've met, who's presented here before, he came up with a little boy, and he said, he told me he has 13 more siblings living in those little houses. Could he have a few more toothbrushes? I was like, "Here, 20 toothbrushes and some..."
Yeah, it's just amazing for our students to go.
It really is.
And make a contribution.
It is equally...
They know in their heart, they made the contribution.
It's equally beneficial. It really is. It really is, and we're super excited about it.
It's powerful that they are expressing that they would rather be doing this work than be on the excursions and being in the fluff. That says a lot about what it means to them to be there.
I, I, when I was in high school, I went to Appalachia and spent a week doing this kind of work. An experience that just changed my life. So I know what's, I know it.
Wonderful.
Other committee members?
It's fantastic.
Fantastic.
I just wanted to ask Gary on, when you were there, you were taking pictures of those kids. Did you take somebody with you with the camera? Is that...
Well, it's LifeTouch. No, well, well, you know, you have to understand that LifeTouch, we had 50 high-end cameras following you everywhere, but all the pictures that I took, I used my phone, and I, I would have somebody take the picture for me. So all the pictures that I shared with Rich Harbor from OCM were all from my, my phone.
Oh, okay.
But if you go online on the LifeTouch website, Facebook page, there are a lot of very high-quality pictures of, of all the experiences, which is pretty neat.
But I thought you were doing individual pictures, because I'd never had...
Yeah, we did individual pictures where what's, what was really, was, was pretty exciting, and I, I know that, that the kids that you worked with would have loved this, where LifeTouch is a school photo company. Well, they, they actually took the whole set, and they set up a classroom, and they did family, student, student photos and family photos. And when the students and their families got the pictures, some of those, those families have never, ever had a picture.
Yeah.
It was, to see their faces of getting a family picture was, it was pretty amazing.
That would blow it away, yeah.
It was amazing.
We had a student, Avery Fornacari, I'll just tell this story quickly, and she brought the first year, she brought one of those Polaroid cameras down, and she was giving the kids the pictures, and she gave one to one of the dads who was working with us, and he kept touching his pocket. And I said, "Oh, is that your son?" And he took it out, and of course, my Spanish isn't great, his English was not great, and he said, "It's the only time, the only picture I have of him." And some of the kids had never seen themselves, none of the mirrors.
They just stare at him like, in amazement, that's what I look like, you know?
Yeah.
Well, this is an action item.
I'll move it.
Mr. Begley?
I'll move it.
Mr. Begley moves the recommendation of administration. Mrs. Burgess is the second on a question. I have one question, Mr. Costin. The application where you would sign off on it, it's written no contract, but there's a bus involved here, and I think an airline, so wouldn't, wouldn't you have to sign off on this?
Excuse me. I, I would think, I think we need to kind of work through how the nonprofit is going to handle the funds and then make arrangements with, with the travel purveyors.
Yeah, we've briefly touched base with the travel agent, but I didn't want to waste too much of our time pending approval, but yes, definitely. So, and the nonprofit has a, is in the process of having a website set up where people can sign up through the, the website for the nonprofit.
But I, I think we would want Mr. Costin to sign off on the...
Sure.
On the overnight field trip application.
Okay, that's fine. So should we just, should I just email you to meet on that?
That'd be fine.
All right.
I think what I would also recommend is that if there's any model of transaction of funds that happens, I think Mr. Costin might be able to help with how that happens.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that he can help guide that.
That would be very helpful. Yes, definitely.
Okay. Any other questions on the motion? Ms. Burgess?
On this too, what about health insurance for the kids if they don't have it?
For health insurance?
I don't know how much.
We have contacted a, for liability. We haven't really delved into the health insurance, but that would be more like our travel insurance, right? The travel health insurance.
There's one in Connecticut, I think it's AIFS, that does the Rotary students. I can give you that information.
Great, yeah. And we've spoken with Bob Hollis about the liability. He does the liability for the charter school for Rising Tide. So that's who we're going to go through for liability.
Dr. Mancus, do you want to add something?
We can help with that too.
Okay, then let's take the vote on this, please. Okay, everybody has voted in favor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We'll keep you posted and we're so excited. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good presentation.
And now, our next item is the medication guidelines policy. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, we are proposing changes to the medication guidelines. You'll see on page three of seven where we struck a paragraph and replaced it with the one that's highlighted. And basically, our goal is on a voluntary basis to allow teachers and whatnot to be able to hand out prescription medication. As you know, we've had issues in the past, trying to get enough nurses to go on overnight trips, out-of-state trips. So the proposed language, and it's very specific, that the folks are trained, it's voluntary, it's prescription medication. And we feel that this is at the recommendation of the nurse leader.
Okay. Committee members, with discussion about this policy before we go to a motion. I have a couple of, I have a couple of items, Mr. Morgan and/or Central Office, about this policy. One is very minor. At 4.2 on the second page, it refers to Department of Education Guidelines for Special Education. I think in that reference, special education should be uppercase. We're talking about the Department of Special Education students, I think. But the other ones I have are more substantial. Mr. Morgan, I don't understand, on the next page, three, it says field trips. And then below that, that 5.3 in yellow, it's in yellow on my sheet. That's what's being added, correct?
Yes.
What I don't understand is that 5.3 references the administration of emergency medication under the title of field trips. So my question would be, we administer emergency medication plenty of places, not just on field trips. So I was wondering why that paragraph, under the administration of emergency medication, comes under the topic of field trips.
This was specific, this was specific for if you didn't have a nurse going on the trip with the, you know, the kids. So that's why it's there under field trips.
Right, but I'm thinking, I'm thinking that it should be under there, under field trips. But it should be, emergency medication occurs every day. So we should have a paragraph somewhere referencing emergency medication in the policy, other than the one that's referenced under field trips.
It's probably covered elsewhere.
I read it and I didn't.
This is specific to field trips, correct?
Yes.
Specific to, even though it's administered every day, if the circumstance is at a field trip, that's why it's in the policy.
Mr. Sali, would you explain what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying it's specific to the field trip, right? It's specific to it.
Yes.
In that circumstance, that emergency medication is required. I understand it's daily.
He wonders why it isn't somewhere else as well.
Yeah, 5.0 refers to field trips, but in regards to, well, because if you go to like 4.7, responds to medication emergencies.
Yeah, that's different.
That's in general.
Yeah.
Sounds like they're at school or something.
That's a medication emergency. This is the administration of emergency medication. They're different on that page. One's an emergency, this is the administration of emergency. By the way, well, anyway, so what I'm thinking is maybe this may have to go back to policy. Because what I'm thinking is that that paragraph about the administrating, administration of emergency medication should exist in the policy and it occurs in field trips, but it occurs during the day as well, at any day. So I want you to, you know, and certainly I'll take my recommendation from the Policy Committee, but, okay. So I'm going to move on from that one because I have another one here that's minor, the one that Mr. Bagley just referenced. 4.7.1, it reads that poses an immediate threat to the health or well-being of the student. Now, we know that some of these, particularly some of the psychotropic medications and the stimulant medications end up threatening the well-being of other students. Because stimulant medication sometimes causes these angry outbursts. So I think that that sentence ought to read, threat to the health or well-being of a student or any other student. Because I could see somebody arguing, saying, well, my child wasn't being threatened by the medicine, but the other students were, and it's not there. So I would send that back to the Policy Subcommittee. And again, I'll take your recommendation when it comes back. And I think there was one more. Can I move on? I have another one, Bob, for you to think about. I'm on page five, which is 7.5. It reads, "Parents or guardians may retrieve their child's medications from the school during any school day." I would prefer that to read, "After making arrangements with the school nerds, parents or guardians may retrieve their medication on any school day." I don't want parents just walking into the building willy-nilly and going down to the nurses' office and saying, I want the medicine.
So you want it specifically stated rather than implied here?
Yep.
Because right now, it's implied.
Right now, it's implied. That's correct.
Okay.
What's the pleasure of the committee on this? Do we want to have this come back to us or, you want to approve it?
We'll just take it back to the Policy Committee.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, I think so. Enough of it to go back, yeah.
So.
If only one item, it'd be different.
We'll send it back to you and then you can bring it back to us?
Sure.
Okay. So we won't take an action on this tonight? Now, we're going to go to job descriptions. Ms. Roth?
These are our three final paraeducator job descriptions. And in the contract, it reads vocational paraeducator. And we, after meeting with the vocational staff, we grouped them into three specific areas. I did want to make one point that when we posted these, we removed the word such twice in our final. And it was posted yesterday and I changed it this morning. Because we had already finished these before that, and alas, if that makes sense, the such conversation. So the first one is vocational paraeducator general. And this paraeducator is in one of the vocational programs, kind of general areas, could be construction, could be allied health. More general programs where there is not an exchange of money at all. So that makes this one different. So it's more for supervisory reasons, the general category one vocational paraeducator. I don't know if you have any specific questions. Sorry.
Any questions on this? I am going to make a general question.
Sure.
And it will apply to all of them. The last time we had these, I had said that I thought the 504 Plan should not be subject to et cetera. It should be listed with the IP on number 12 on each one.
Yes. Yep, we're doing that as well. That's, we now have a document of all the consistent pieces, it's in the Google Drive. Yes.
Having said that, we can take, we can accept a motion on this one. Ms. Burgess? Moves to approve as recommended? Is there a second? Ms. Badger is the second?
So we have Mrs. Burgess and Mrs. Badger.
That's right. Any questions on the motion? Okay, so let's take the vote on the first one. Okay, that's good. And now the.
Yes, the next one is vocational paraeducator for the school store. And this job has changed dramatically because we no longer sell food in the school stores. You've heard some of the guidelines and things like that, so it's managing inventory and programmatic pieces. So this is very similar and it's in our school store in both high schools.
Okay, so we're going, this is 8.5 on our agenda?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, did you do 8.4?
Oh, Taiguan Order, I apologize. I went ahead of myself, I apologize.
Well, we'll do 8.5. We can figure that out. Any motion on this one? Ms. Badger?
I move the way of proof.
Okay, seconded by Mrs. Trusselli. Any question on the school store vocational paraeducator? Okay, we'll take the vote on that one.
It came up and it went.
Hold on, sorry.
We had it.
What was that one?
8.5.
8.5?
That was my fault.
School store vocational paraeducator.
My fault. We're going to, can you refresh my? There you go, okay. Sorry, I moved ahead. I was thinking about going back.
Okay, everybody voted in favor. Now the vocational paraeducator.
Yes, the final one is vocational paraeducator culinary. And that is the individual who works in the school restaurant and handles reservations and booking and all of the intake of funds and things of that nature. So that is the third one this evening.
Okay. Any questions? Take a motion? Ms. Hart moves it, seconded by Ms. Badger. Any questions to the motion? All right, we'll take the vote.
Just so folks know, moving forward, we'll be housing all these, obviously through electronic school board, but on our new webpage that Mrs. Targi and Mrs. Colby are working on, they'll, on the human resources page, job descriptions will be a major piece of it. Because right now, they're a little difficult to find. So we're beginning that, moving over those documents.
Mine came up that I voted in.
No way, really?
That was good. Mary, I don't know how you did that, but you voted for all of us.
I think we all had voted prior to.
It says we all voted.
Sally was going to vote anyway, but.
Has anybody opposed to it?
I don't know how you did that. That was pretty.
I would like to know too.
Well, I think we all voted. I think it was all in.
Yes, we voted in favor. It's unanimous.
We had all voted and it didn't come up.
No, I didn't even hit the button for.
I think we confused it because we went out of order.
Okay, so now we're going to go to school fundraisers. Anything to speak to that from anybody? Nothing?
No.
Committee reports. Reports and proposals from school committees. Mrs. Badger?
I just wanted to say that we did a, had another Pilgrimage collaborative meeting and I was going to be ready in two seconds, but I apparently don't have the sheet I was looking for. But anyways, we are doing a search right now for the new director. And we will be having a, and everybody's invited, obviously, to our meeting in April, on April 5th. Will be when we'll have a community-wide, will be an interview with the board, but the community will be invited to that. So that's our next step and all of that. And as in the past, I've done the Pan Mass Kids Ride, and I like to put a plug here. It's on June 14th at Charge Pond, and it's going to be our sixth year, so we're excited about that. And then I just wanted to say, and I know I'm sure Mr. Morgan will mention it, but I went to the Beauty and the Beast production and the kids did a phenomenal job, phenomenal. And I was in the nosebleeds, like way in the back. The place was crowded. It was just a really great atmosphere and the kids did amazing.
Two shows sold out.
Yeah, amazing. I had never been that far back before. It was like the wall was right there.
I was so sad.
Yeah, I went.
Other reports and proposals? Mr. Morgan?
Oh, ditto on the Beauty and the Beast. I was in the third row. Very good. I also had a question. I got a flyer in the mail from Mass regarding Day on the Hill, and do we plan to attend?
We didn't go last year. Day on the Hill last year was relocated to another venue.
And culinary wasn't serving. Culinary is serving this year, but I'm not sure of the venue.
In another building, though.
It didn't identify where it was, so. It's at the State House? Okay.
No, was it the State House?
No, he's talking about this year.
This year.
Last year it wasn't.
No, no, last year it wasn't, this year it was, but I thought they said it was in a different building. Well, anyway, it's not the same building that they're meeting, anyway.
Yeah, I actually have some meetings that day. So if people want to go, you know, they are serving culinary, culinary schools are serving lunch. But it's going to have to, you know, if, we'll just take a sign-up, see who wants to go. Typically, we take our students, so we'll have to see if the students want to go.
Okay, and then the only other thing I was going to bring up is regarding the school committee on the road. This year was a little different format, where you went during the school day and got a different perspective. I've seen the kids actually in classrooms, which is great. But for some of us, that's a challenge when it's during the day. Either we don't have ability to leave work to go, or like myself, work in Boston or out of town, can't go. So my proposal is, next year, if we have school committee on the road, you know, maybe we can mix it up every other year, but we kind of go back to the other, the old format, where it's maybe have the meeting a half hour, hour early and do the tour of the school or meet with some of the students. But it's just, you know, it's great to see the videos and the pictures, but you just can't, you know, nine o'clock, 9:30 on a Tuesday or something, it's just hard for myself and maybe for others to participate.
My suggestion would be instead of every other year, mix it up in one year and do two, two in the day and two at night or something like that.
Yeah, whatever works, but.
Yeah.
So I have.
That's a good proposal, Mr. Morgan. Thank you. Just a connection to that, I had raised this a while back. I, for one, would really like to do, and I realize during, this is during the day. I'm sorry for that. I would like to do one of those things at Plymouth South High School, the new school. I want to see it, having been on the building committee. I'd love to see it in action.
In action, yeah, instead of, yeah.
Let's do that, be great. I agree.
Okay, we can arrange that. Other reports and proposals. Mrs. Burgess?
Yes, I just, well, of course, I did Beauty and the Beast, but beyond that, I, last Monday night, I did this. I had met with Gary Carson and I took the Plymouth Schools' energy, how we've done from 2010 to now and how we're sustainable at 100% and giving back to the town. I did that presentation, but I also did the PowerPoint that was presented at town meeting about the canopies and for the lights on the fields and things like that. And it went over very big. A man from, one of the town officials from Cohasset called me, but also they asked for more information. Other towns are calling the woman that runs the Sustainable South Shore. Because there's 21 communities and they are mostly people that work in the towns. So you're talking to a very good audience about that. And I'd been working with her and trying to get our message out, because she kept thinking it was one school that we were doing. I couldn't get, even on the, even on the agenda, it said one school, but it was all of the schools. Actually, it was all 14 of our buildings because we do it for them all. So, but anyhow, I just wanted to say that I did do that.
Ms. Hart?
And then there were a few of us that had the opportunity to have dinner the other night with the artists from Plymouth, England. And that was a great experience. It was nice to hear more about what the program actually entails and who's involved with it. And I've actually talked to some students that said, oh, yeah, we're involved in that project, so it's great.
Joey is, yeah, Joey is.
Yes, she is.
So it was really, it was really fun to go and experience that as well.
A great meal by our food services.
I actually mentioned it when they were here, the food services provided an amazing meal.
They always do.
They always do a good job, yeah.
Okay. Else under, reports and proposals from committee members. Okay, then we'll go PYDC. Is there a report this evening?
No, that'll be this Friday morning.
And building committee, there's no report?
No, that's this Thursday night.
Personnel?
Yes. We have two certificated appointments, four coach or advisor appointments, three classified appointments, one leave of absence, and two resignations.
Thank you. Any questions on the personnel? Solar projects, Mr. Carson?
Thank you. We are continuing to working with the vendor, the selected vendor. Currently, the attorneys are involved putting together the PPA and we'll be bringing that forward hopefully soon to the school committee for the canopies and the rooftop. The battery and the lights, we're working separately with those, how we're going to put together a contract for those. And we continue to work on those items.
Made a lot of progress in the few short weeks of this year. Made a lot of progress in the, in a few short weeks of this year.
We're, we're working on it, believe me.
Diligently, okay. Accounts payable, Ms. Hunt?
Okay. Where school committee members have been provided with a copy of the Cost Center Transfer and Transaction Summary Report and the warrant review, for review, I move that the Plymouth School Committee accept and approve the report and accounts payable warrant, number S-020818, dated February eighth, two thousand and eighteen, in the amount of one million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars and ninety-four cents, as presented.
I'll second. That was seconded by Mrs. Burgess.
No.
Mr. Bagley. Dennis, I'm sorry, I was, I was reading that number, let me see. Okay.
Finish your voice.
I was doing something else. Okay. All those in favor, will vote.
Am I the only one getting the cruise control pop-up? Yeah, nobody else getting the network issues?
No.
Not tonight, I have in the past, but not tonight.
Now your votes counted, though.
Yeah, the vote's working, and then I get the network.
Okay, everybody voted in favor.
Doesn't matter.
That's too funny.
Okay, we have the minutes of December the fourth. Mrs. Badger?
I move that we approve the December fourth minutes as presented.
Seconded by Ms. Trusselli. Is there a question on the fourth? Okay, I guess we can vote.
Maybe.
Okay, they've been approved by everybody, and now we have the minutes of December the eighteenth. Ms. Hunt?
I move that we accept the minutes as written.
The eighteenth, seconded by Ms. Badger. Question, any questions on the eighteenth? Okay, we can vote for that. Okay, we have one abstention.
I wasn't there.
I'm sorry?
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yes, we have one abstention, everybody else voting in favor. So we have some books to pass on, Dr. Mestas?
Yes, tonight, we have a number of books, and this is from Plymouth South High School, and these are, many of them are duplicates, and books will be donated to Big Hearted Books, and they're no longer, some of them are no longer current editions, so if you take a look, there's a, a long list, and this, this is a list that is generated from the library, so what they have done is they go through and weed the library book, the library collection of books, and it's something that we have been doing regularly, so you may see these in the future.
Do we ever, like, talk to the Plymouth Public Library and see if they want any of these books before we donate them to external groups?
We have in the past, but I can definitely inquire.
Yeah, and just with, for some reason, it saying duplicates made me think, oh, library, I don't, I haven't thought of it years ago.
They usually don't, they usually put them for sale for fifty cents or something like that, yeah.
We will, we will definitely do that. Yeah, we, I will ask, okay?
So we have a motion to move these books on, no, this is an action item, so we don't have a motion yet. Mrs. Burgess moves it, seconded by Ms. Hunt. Any questions? Okay, time to vote. Okay, that passes unanimously, and is there any other business to come before the school committee? Seeing no hands, we will stand adjourned at nine PM.